Hi guys.
Oh, hi there Teresa, how are you doing?
Fine, how are you guys doing?
Doing pretty good. I'm just kind of deer in the headlights here.
It's alright, I'll try to get settled. You all surviving the smoke alright?
Well, it's been a few rough days of it.
Yeah.
Feel for the folks that are a lot closer to it.
Yeah, me too.
Gotta be rough. Just the mention of that word, I can smell smoke.
Sorry.
Say hello Alan.
Hello Johan, how are you?
Okay, reasonably well, I don't like the smoke very well either.
Yeah, it's hard for me to breathe.
Yeah, makes me tired, seems to make me tired, hi Dale.
Absolutely. Hey Teresa, how are you doing? Aaron, how are you? I'm sorry, hi Alan, nice to see you.
Good to see you.
How are you today?
Doing fine, doing fine.
Good, hello Johan.
Hello Dale, hope it's not a smoky down where you are.
Oh man, it's been terrible, I've been doing some yard work the last week because I had a little bit of time and it's terrible. Makes me sound like the lead singer from The Crash Test Dummies, remember that guy? Real croaky.
Have you been over to Boulder at all, is it bad over there also?
I haven't even been up there for a couple of weeks. It's, I think it's pretty bad, you know, they're in that kind of a pocket up there, so if there's almost any kind of pollution, it sort of settles in.
Right, it gets trapped in there.
Yeah, yeah. Hi Paul.
Hi Dale, how are you?
Doing well, thanks.
Good.
I just got my haircut, so I'm feeling cute as a dickens today.
We have about 10 minute problem of needing to get my haircut.
Yeah, I've had that pandemic hair thing going on.
Hello Paul.
Hi, how are you Commissioner Heel?
How are you doing, I'm fine.
Doing well, so I have a funny thing, hold on Dale brought up haircuts. I had, so I've been cutting mine because it might get long, it has to come off. So I've been cutting my sons as well and he goes back, they're actually gonna try in class and he's not sure he wants me to cut it, so I think I have to take him somewhere this week. Because he's not real impressed with the way dad cuts his hair.
Oh, my mom cut my hair until I was 12 and then finally I put my foot down.
Yep. So I'm getting that.
Don't take it personally.
Yeah.
Alright, about 3 minutes till 7.
Okay. Round up.
Thank you. We're missing one Commissioner I believe.
Hello, and hello from Steamboat Springs.
Nice.
Oh, Steamboat, nice.
Yeah. I got to pass by one of the plumes of smoke on the way here, it was impressive.
Did you have to come back via Montrose?
No, you know, it's just through the tunnel and then, what is it, up the 8 or something? And driving along that route off to the right, you could see that that plume, hopefully it doesn't head this way and cut me off trying to come back.
It's Highway 9, it's near Kremlin.
What's that?
It's Highway 9, it's near Kremlin.
Yeah, so I went through Kremlin. And it was kind of off to the mountains on the right as you're heading towards Kremlin.
Yep.
But it would seem like it was closer to Silverthorn than it was to Kremlin, like I could see it closer, maybe there's, maybe this is a different one, I'm not sure, but yeah.
We had a planner, I don't know if any of you recall Andrea Rand, she's been gone for about 7 years now. Her family, she's from Colorado, her family has a home in, not Frisco, Breckenridge. And then they have some family friends, so she was in town visiting her family and she got caught in that and they spent, essentially, she got to Glenwood and they had to drive back to Montrose to get, to go south to get around the mountains. Because the fire blocked off 70 and then there was an accident, I think on Independence Pass and something else, so there's just a whole bunch of other things that happened with that fire and traffic was closed down in that whole area. I think it was Monday or Sunday or Monday of this week.
Wow.
We got less than a minute here before 7 and we've got everybody present, welcome Travis. We'll convene this at 7 o'clock.
Hello Travis.
See you all.
Hi Kathy.
Yeah, hi Kathy.
Alex, how you doing there?
Hello. Great, how's everybody else, sounds good.
Doing well.
Different scenery there, jealous of Rhonda.
Yeah. Too.
Alright, you ready?
I'm ready.
Alright, so let's do 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, go ahead. Good evening and welcome to the Lakewood Planning Commission regular meeting on August 19th, 2020. It's 7pm and I call this meeting to order. Secretary Schultz, would you please read the roll?
Commissioner Bartlet, here. Commissioner Combe, here. Commissioner Heel, here. Commissioner Kentner, here. Commissioner Miller, here.
I'm here.
Commissioner Peters, here. Commissioner Stone, here. We have a quorum.
Thank you Mr. Schultz. Welcome everybody, this is the first item of business on the agenda after roll call is to hear case, item number 3, Mr. Schultz, would you read the item into the record for us please?
Item 3, Case BA 20001, 10700 West Exposition Drive, Banking Plan Extension.
Thank you very much. As I recall, we haven't done one of these meetings in a while, but as I recall, we usually have an applicant presentation followed by a staff presentation, is that the order, Mr. Rice, that you want to do tonight?
Yes, and we have both the applicant and the case planner, if you feel that you've reviewed the materials on Lakewood Speaks and and do not want a formal presentation, we could proceed that way, but we had planned on doing presentations.
Okay, show of hands just on the screen, if you'd like to go ahead and proceed with presentations.
Ellen, I think for people watching, it might be helpful as well.
I think that's a very good point, so let's, let's proceed Paul with presentation.
I can take it over from here and actually it is just the applicant's presentation this evening. But certainly we have, I'm sorry, just the staff's presentation this evening, but certainly we have the applicant available if there is any additional questions as well.
Thank you.
Um, so let me give this a go to share my screen here. That's the only ones. Does everybody see that now?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so, thank you Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Bria Pafford, I'm a planner here in our planning department in the city of Lakewood. And I have a short presentation following, regarding a request we received for an extension of a banking plan. This is associated with an address from a site plan and my major subdivision case, that's 10700 West Exposition Drive. And the banking plan is under case number BA 2001. So the applicant is requesting a one-year extension of an existing banking plan that was administratively approved by the authority granted to the planning director pursuant to Chapter 1427 of the Lakewood Municipal Code. Also referred to as the Residential Growth Limitation Ordinance. And this existing banking plan expires December 31st of 2020 this year. Pursuant to the Growth Limitation Ordinance, the Planning Commission may approve a one-year extension to an existing banking plan upon show of good cause. In this slide, I've provided an aerial map that shows the subdivision configuration, that shown in the heavy yellow line there. And as you can see, the final plaque dedicated South Oak Street to the city. And that's for the purpose of the future public street that will provide access to each one of the future single-family homes. Before building permits can be pulled for the new single-family dwelling units, the public streets need to be constructed so that you can accommodate access to each one of the new lots. And this just references the zone district for the subdivision as well as, you know, the surrounding neighborhood. The neighborhood and the lots here in the major subdivision are in the small lot residential, which is our R16 Zone District. And that's a single-family residential zone district. The following development construction timeline was provided by the developer to show good cause of the 12-month construction schedule to build the required public improvements for the proposed subdivision is actually exceeds the lifespan of that existing banking plan. Generally speaking, these public improvements must be in place before construction can be begin for the new dwelling units. The Planning Commission may want to consider the unique position for construction phasing that is typically associated with developing a residential subdivision, especially one that requires new public streets. So in, not all the time, but you know, commonly, the first phase of construction for a new subdivision is associated with activities like overlap grading, installation of utility mainline extensions, fire hydrants, construction of stormwater detention facilities, as well as the construction of the new public street and public sidewalks. Only once these facilities are in place, or at least far enough along in construction, can construction actually begin on those individual dwelling units and the other private improvements on those properties. And then finally, the extension of the banking plan will provide some assurance to the developer that some of these upfront costs, specifically with land and construction of these public improvements like streets and sidewalks and utilities, that once they get invested in them, that they can actually recover some of those costs by moving right into that second phase, which would then be construction of the single-family homes and then selling those homes to new owners. So at the time this presentation was prepared and uploaded to Lakewood Speaks, the city had 192 unrequested residential allocations remaining. That was out of the 413 that we have available for this year. Staff does not anticipate needing these 29 banked allocations that have been issued to the specific project to fill any future allocation request for the remainder of the year or fill any, you know, open and unmet banking plans. So as such, we would recommend that the Planning Commission approve the one-year banking plan extension request. And that certainly concludes this presentation for the extension of the existing banking plan, case number BA 2001. And certainly at this time, if there is any questions, we'd be happy to help answer those.
Okay, very good. Let me get my participant's screen up here, thank you Bria. So I will open it now to Christian questions, please raise your hand electronically if you have a question that helps me keep on track, I don't always see the physical hands wave. I don't see any raised hands at this point, there's one, I have a question too, so I'll raise my hand, but I will follow the others, first Kathy, I believe you had a question first, then we'll go to Teresa.
It is, sorry, okay. I'm sorry about that. I have several questions, I think I'll just ask one or two. Overall, you know, obviously this is sort of the, the point of an extent of a banking plan to begin with is for a development like this, you know, that might need extra time with these improvements, you know, in general, this seems like a good idea. But I'm wondering about the timing here and how, obviously the fact that we're doing this means that the timing, what was not what was originally anticipated and we have the timing that's anticipated from here to completion. But what happened, I guess, that the building permits wouldn't, that this has not started and we're not ready as originally anticipated? That would be my first question.
Do you want to take a shot of that, or you want me to?
Um, yeah, certainly if you want to and the applicant may be able to provide some input as well.
Okay, so, and correct me here if I, if I'm mistaken, the, so the allocation request I think was with the property owner, is that correct Bria?
Um, the current owner, yes.
Yes, and so the current owner is looking to, they aren't the actual developer. And so they are looking to sell the property to the applicant, the developer. And so the, the property owner in the first of the year actually requested the allocations so that they had units that they could sell to, to build. And so it's, it's taken a little time to work out that deal, so I saw from the timeline on Slide 6, that occurred in July and I think the property was transferred in August. And so now the developer is gearing up to actually start construction and they've outlined their timeframe. And you know, they've spent the first 6, 7 months of the year putting the deal together. So the applicant wouldn't have considered the property had there not been allocations for the units available in, on, on the actual property. So if, if the property owner is, what we're seeing is if the property owner isn't the actual developer, the property owners are requesting allocations for the properties so that they can market them to, to a developer. So that's kind of long-winded.
Yeah, no, but, but Paul, or, thank you, because that concerns me and is maybe something that needs to be cleared up. It doesn't concern me maybe necessarily for this specific extension, but the ordinance, I do understand that, so, so you're saying that the person who were the owner who requested the allocations never intended to actually develop this, always intended to sell it? Or at the point that they applied for the allocations?
I don't think we know that for sure.
Right, if, if I recall, and this is where I would ask Bria to clarify, if I recall, the developer that went through the process to get the plaque in place, there was some intention in developing and is, and again, it's a discussion on the developer side. Sometimes it's easier, or, how do I phrase this? It could be more difficult to develop a site than you get the entitlements in place. So once the entitlements are in place, you, there's a decision point, do you actually develop it and find a group to take you through that process? Do you have the experience to do that? Or do you turn around and the property goes to someone with more experience? So without being in those discussions, I can't say that the property owner had no intention of developing the property or they wouldn't have gone through the process. So at some point in this year, they made a decision to transfer ownership of the property to the group according to the table.
And I think as a body, this might be something we would want to talk about, about the ordinance, because this is, the intent of the ordinance and when you read it, is to be much further along in the development process before you apply for allocations. And with the proposed timing, as it sits, with an extension, they're not talking about being able to pull building permits until the end of 2021. So if they experience another delay, then we're at the end of 2021 and I don't think they're eligible for another extension at that point. So I guess what I'm saying is it actually might be in the developer's best interest. I'm not saying that, you know, I'm leaning towards voting for this extension, however, I would see it in being the developer's best interest to surrender these allocations and get allocations again at the beginning of 2021. Because that's the year that they may actually put the building permits and then if they need an extension for that, they have until the end of 2022. This is rather far out, I think, when you read 14.27 and when the allocations should be applied for, and I think this is a good example of, of that. And there's no reason to think that 29 allocations would not be available at the beginning of the year. Again, it wouldn't make me vote not for it, but I think that this is our first time that we're experiencing this. And I think that that's something for the developer to consider and for us to consider when we're accepting allocation applications to make sure that they are far enough along as the 14.27 indicates. And I have a couple of other questions, but I bet they're the same as other people, so I'll let other people ask their questions first.
If I might be able to jump in, my name is Nick Montalbano, I'm with AMH Development, we build single-family homes here in Colorado. And I can't speak to all of the history of, of the property owners and their intention, whether they ever intended to build. I know that some other builders have looked at the project in the past, so I think, from my understanding, they were always looking at selling it. You know, but for us, and I, you know, I appreciate the consideration as far as the timeframe. You know, as, I think everybody knows, the project is fully approved and could start building, or you know, you could start your horizontal development, public improvements immediately. So, you know, for us, time is of the essence and we obviously, the challenge here is we, you know, we have a probably 10 to 12 month development timeframe. So we really want to get started right away, but we do feel confident that if we can get started here in the next month, month and a half, that we will have time to get the development work done, apply for building permits and have those issued prior to 20, the end of 2021. So, you know, the big, the big challenge for us and the reason we don't want to necessarily wait for the extension in the beginning of the year, 2021, is, you know, one, these property owners have owned the property and spent a lot of money and they're really trying to get this, get this moving, of course, and so do we. But it, yeah, it's, sorry, I lost my train of thought there a little bit, but the, it's really, you know, there's, there's a very large expense to develop the property, as, as everyone knows. You know, we're talking several million dollars and, you know, for us to start the development without knowing we have enough time to get those allocation extensions in place would be an enormous risk. So for us, as long as we know we have enough time to extend the allocations, have building permits issued, obviously get the horizontal development work done, we want to move the process forward as soon as we can.
Well, that's good to hear, but just so, I mean, unless I read something wrong, as it sits now, there is only a one, there was already one banking plan granted that goes to the end of this year, then of 2020. And there's only a one, which, which is requesting today, a one-year extension. And that would be the most, and if you get to the end of 2021 and you haven't gotten those building permits yet, then that would be more of an issue.
Of course, yeah, and.
So that, I'm just, you know, I'm just being upfront with this timeframe that you said, because if you surrender them more than 60 days, there's no penalty, because you haven't held up anybody else's development. And again, you know, I hear that you say you want to, you know, absolutely, this is not about holding up your development, it's making sure it's done in a timely way. And it's, again, it just sounds like that getting allocations in January of 2021 would not hold it up at all, because you're not planning to actually use allocations until the end of 2021, is that correct?
Well, so as far as I understand, we are able to apply for building permits once the surety has been posted. So in that case, I think that gives me more confidence that we'll be able to have everything approved, permits issued by the end of 2021, because we could start horizontal development probably sometime towards the end of this year. And that would give us enough time so that we could start putting in our applications, working through that process. Bria's informed me, it could take up to 6 months currently to get building permits issued. So just, just another reason, I think, why we would just get started as soon as we can. But that should give us enough time.
And may I kind of make a point, so I think if you were to ask the question this way, and, and we're kind of talking about the project specifically, I don't think that Mr. Montalbano would have purchased the property had there not be, been the certainty that there's allocations associated with those lots. And so that's, that's one of the reasons why you're seeing these earlier in the process instead of the end. The developer is not going to commit tens of thousands of dollars to a project unless they know that they have the allocations in place to allow them to move forward with the project.
Well, and, and I think that, that we as a body should talk about that, because there's conflicting language in the ordinance, and I know that there was discussion by the people that drafted this. As, and it says that the owner will apply for the allocations. And then another place it does say that it's a site-specific, that the allocations run with the site. I know the discussion there was unintentional ownership change in the middle of a development. It was not so much for, and it was definitely discussed that we did not want allocations to be used as a selling point. This seems to be an inappropriate use of the allocation process. That said, I don't want you to think that this affects my, you know, I'm definitely very supportive of this project. It's detached single-family homes, which is what we, is most in demand and least in supply in Lakewood. And, and I am, you know, wanting your project to get done in the most efficient manner possible, but I hope that as a body, we maybe discuss 14.27 and that this is especially something we discussed, because allocations were never intended to be used as a selling point, which is obviously what they're being used as. So thank you for that clarification, Mr. Rice, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, can we move on now, Teresa, you've had your hand up a while.
Yeah, so first of all, Bria, thank you for the presentation, that was great, you broke it down really great. And the numbers at the end, that's exactly what I needed to see was, you know. And so to me, this, this looks like a slam dunk decision, I, I think it's pretty straightforward to grant these. I had a similar concern about, is there a flaw or something in the process that led us to this point? But I think after listening to Mr. Rice, I may be hearing that, rather than there being a flaw, it's more of there are measures in place that are robust enough to deal with situations like this. And, and honestly, I, I believe that, and I'm not familiar, Commissioner Kentner, with this part of the law that you're citing, but I, I, I think that, I'm not sure it's realistic to expect developers to wait that long, I'm just not sure. I think that's a point of discussion for the commission at some point in the future.
Okay, are you complete Teresa? Alright, thank you, Dale, go ahead.
Thank you, and thanks Bria, that was helpful and.
Thank you. And thanks, Bria. That was helpful. And. Mr. Montalbano? Sorry?
Not bad. I've heard that. I've heard worse.
I'm sure I would, tell me.
No worries. Happens every day.
It's Montalbano?
Montalbano.
Okay, I'm sorry. I appreciate your.
You can call me Nick.
How about Mr. M?
Sure. Sounds great.
And I, I actually, Teresa anticipated, I think, some of my, my comments. I am in support of this also because I. I know from building my own single-family house that the process took longer than, than what we're talking about here. And maybe, I, I agree with Commissioner Cantor, we probably shouldn't talk about this because it may, some of their. Expectations may be a little bit unreasonable, but, and we, we would appreciate hearing from you, Mr. M. If, if you, if you, you know.
Sure. No, no, I'd be happy to help. Yeah, I think the challenge, you know, development, building always, like you said, takes longer than you think it's going to, right? There's one little hiccup can set you back a month. You know, I think as the, as the policy is current, where the challenge is just. Giving, giving the developers and builders enough time to one, get building permits and the horizontal developed. With that extension. So, you know, if I could make it, and obviously, like I said. You know, you're, you're buying properties and you're developing properties and, you know, up north a million, a million dollars. So you're making enormous capital investments. And if you're going to do that, any builder is going to want to know for sure that they have enough time and enough assurances. That by the time they develop their property, they have building permits. So, you know, I mean, I guess maybe one suggestion could be maybe building in some kind of. Additional extension. So if you have a one-year extension, maybe there's some kind of option for, for an additional extension. Maybe it's even a fee. Of some kind, but ju- just so that the builder knows there's some kind of protection in the event that. Their development takes longer than they expected, the acquisition takes longer than expected. Who knows what, but I think that the challenge is going to be. You know, with the policy is, is getting developers comfortable investing in Lakewood right now. Because there's so much uncertainty around. You know, the end result and whether or not they'll ultimately be able to build. I think that's the challenge or, or working with developers upfront. And this might be something you're already doing, but working with developers upfront and, you know, securing four, five, six years out. Banking plans, because ultimately, if you have a big enough project. It, it could easily from start to finish be, be that timeframe or more. So those be my thoughts. Happy to answer any other questions on it.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Montalbano. Dale, you have a following question?
Oh, I did. Yes, I was, I'm sorry. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Montalbano. Those are helpful insights. I know that even in building the single-family homes, it's, it's a much longer process. I have a friend who's trying to build one right now. He's waited many months for his building permit, just for a single home. So I. I can see some of those, those problems. That doesn't. And this is one of the first times that we've seen something like this in the commission. That's partly how we work out the kinks and. The, the feedback. We don't want to scare people off from, from making. Nice developments that will contribute to housing availability in Lakewood. That's, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Dale. I'm gonna call on myself here and lower my hand. And Teresa, I see you have a hand up again, so. I'll call on you after I speak. I have a question about the, the actual ownership of the allocations. I'm a little confused. Here, I understand, you know, how property changes hands, of course. And I'm generally supportive of extending allocations in this situation. My question has to do with title. If the original allocations were granted to Mr. Popora, if I'm saying that right. Would they not transfer with the property when the property is sold? And maybe this is a question for Paul.
Right. The allocations run with the property. They do not run with the property owner. So if the property is sold, the allocations go with the property.
Okay, well, that makes sense to me because that's my understanding of general property transfer law. But in this case, there are three parties on the application for an extension. And that's where my confusion comes into play here. Wouldn't the only party eligible to ask for an extension of the allocations be the current owner?
So I could, I could help clarify real quick.
Nick, let me, let me, let me.
Oh, sure.
And you can, you can add into that, so I can outline process first. So not necessarily Commissioner Heald. So when we get a development application, whether it's for a single-family home or. Fast food restaurant. The property owner isn't generally the one that submits the application to, to build, say, the single-family home. The, the property owner wishes to build a, a home, and so they have the contractor or the architect or. Someone who has a more general knowledge of the construction industry, they submit the applications and take them through the process. And then the owner. We get a letter of authorization. From the property owner saying that, you know, the, the architect can represent them. There, there's different ways. So. The applicant is not always the property owner.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, and that adds a little clarity to it because. You know, I noticed that, you know, like I said, we have originally one owner, now we have three applicants for an extension. So I just wanted to try to clarify, who is granted the extension?
The extension would be granted to the project and to the banking plan. And whoever ends up pulling the permits for the single-family homes is who will be using those allocations, provided they have expired.
So it goes with the property, basically? Okay.
There's nothing that requires the property owner to be the person applying for an allocation. So it may be that case, and in other instances, it may be someone that's not the owner. But it's tied to the address and we give it a number, so it, it stays there. Yeah.
Okay, that clarifies a lot of things. Thank you. I'm generally supportive of this too. You know, I can appreciate how challenging it is, particularly in today's times to. Make all this come together and happen. But that, that finishes my question. I believe Teresa had her hand up again.
And I just had one more thought on this. You know, this is a new, implementing this is new, and we're all trying to figure out how to do it, and we want to try to do that in the best way. And, and so I don't know. Again, Commissioner Cantor, I'm not familiar with this part that you're citing, and I'm not familiar with the background conversations that everyone had. But I, I don't perceive this situation as having the allocations as a selling point. To me, it was more of a, it's a risk management thing that the developers need to know. You know, this number before they proceed. So I, I. I just, I, I'm wondering if we can just kind of look at it from maybe that perspective as well. Or maybe instead of a selling point.
Okay, so. I see Kathy has a hand up again. You have additional questions? Ms. Cantor?
Sorry, I was having problems. Usually speaking up isn't a problem. I have a couple of questions, and it's funny, it kind of relates to the risk management. And, and it's a tough balance. Oh, and just for Mr. Montalbano, I'm sorry, Montalbano. We do have actually up to a five-year banking plan is in ordinance for larger projects.
That's great.
Yeah, absolutely. Like, like I said, my concern is more the opposite in this case that by the time you, you know, that if there is another delay. That then it would be a problem. So you're asking for 29 family, single homes. How many of those do you? Do you apply for all 29 building permits at once?
We most likely would. I believe that would be the plan is to, to lay out all of our house plans on each lot. Specifically and submit. We might want to consider doing a design review with the building department first. To make sure that all the, the houses comply with the architectural standards and all the zoning ordinances. But once we've had a good grasp on that, we would most likely apply for all of them at once.
So how many, how many do you actually like build it? So, so within six months, you would start all 29 of them?
We, we normally start about six per month. Yeah, so what would that be? Four or five months, probably, would have everything started.
Okay, I know some single-family home builders build some and then try to sell some of those first to then do others. And I was just curious what your plan was in this case.
Yeah, it's such a small site. I think we would just want to build it, you know, just get in there and build them out.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cantor? So asking, so that, that's a really good, good question. I think what I might ask Nick. Are you using a master plan or are they all going to be custom-built homes?
Yeah, we would be most likely have three or four. Master plans, and then we would alter the elevations as need be to ensure that they comply with, you know, they create a good mix.
Right. And that's how he's able to apply for all 29 permits because they're not custom-built for each individual lot. He's going to get a set of homes approved, that then they modify the exterior of elevations to meet the, the property owner. And, and that allows him to apply for. What you're, what you're thinking. You're right, he's only building a couple per month. But he can actually get permits for all of them because he knows what he's going to build.
That's exactly right.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna jump in here real quick and make an informational announcement. Since our agenda's online indicated that the Board of Adjustments meeting would start at 7:30. I want to make an announcement for anybody that's tuned in, expecting to watch the Board of Adjustments meeting. We are not there yet. We are still concluding the Planning Commission meeting. So you didn't tune into a Board of Adjustment meeting that was started before 7:30. I just wanted to clarify that and ask you to. Please hang on as we wrap this meeting up as quickly as possible. Are there any, I don't see any more hands. Are there any more questions? If not seeing none, I will go ahead and call for a motion to approve the banking plan. Dale?
Thank you. I will move that we. Approve the banking plan for case BA, dah, two, zero, dah, zero, zero, one. Banking plan extension, I should have said.
Second. We have a second. Thank you, Johann. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any additional comments? Seeing no hands, then I will call for a roll call vote. Secretary Schultz, will you take care of the roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Bartlet?
Aye.
Commissioner Combe?
Aye.
Commissioner Heald?
Aye.
Commissioner Cantor?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Peters?
Aye.
Commissioner Stone?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you, Secretary Schultz.
Thank you.
With that action, I will close item three and ask Secretary Schultz to please read item four on the agenda.
Item four, approval of the minutes of the June 3 Planning Commission Special Meeting.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion on the minutes? I see a hand raised, Dale.
Oh. I'm sorry, that was from my making the motion.
No problem. Okay. In the board one last time, I see no hands raised for, for comments or questions, so. I've, I've known that we, we usually do this by consensus. And I think we could also vote on it. Mr. Rice, would it be customary to approve minutes by consensus tonight?
You, you may do that, yes.
Okay, very good. Then let's, just with a physical show of hands, if you approve the minutes. From the June 3, 2020 Planning Commission Special Meeting, please raise your hand. I believe we have another unanimous vote. So that passes. So that will conclude item four, and item five is the general business. Mr. Rice or Mr. Parker, you have your own business item?
Mr. Chairman, now that the board has finished their first. Banking plan discussion, we did want to chat just briefly about what information would be useful for you in discussing this. So. Generally with these things, we try not to overload you with everything that's, that we have, you know, all the applications, all the paperwork and et cetera. But, you know, we want you to have the information that's useful for you in making this decision. So. You know, you know, site plans, I don't know how much they play into the criteria for this, but if you'd like them, we can give them to you. I'm interested in your feedback as a, as a commission on, on what information would be useful to you on future applications like this.
Has a hand up, yeah.
Well, I was the one that requested a little additional information. The main thing for me was that you were asking us to. Approve an extension to a banking plan, and the banking plan was not included. So that, that to me was the main thing that I felt like I really needed to see to be able to make a decision. And then I was interested actually in the site plan application. I was trying to get timing. I was trying to understand what the original timing was. And what the current timing is, because if they're asking for a banking plan extension, that should be meaning that they already actually started something. Was the intent, and they ran into something like, oh, you know, I honestly expected to hear something like, well, I thought I was going to start in March and then COVID happened. That was sort of the, you know what I mean?
Yep. That, that makes total sense, and that, that helps us. I think so when we write our staff reports and when we send information, we can definitely address both of those issues. I think universally, you're generally going to see these not as. As, as creation of new banking plans, but as extension, because I think the code. Requires us, it says shall approve during the calendar year. So I think. The first round, they'll come to us and say, we, you know, we haven't finished yet. Can you give us to the end of the year? And I think it says we shall do that. So generally, you'll see these at the end of the year as extensions of administratively approved same calendar year plans. So we can give you the, the plan that we originally created during that calendar year, and then I hear you. Information on the timing of the project and what's caused it to be late or what, yeah, what the ultimate plan is. That makes a lot of sense, and we'll, we'll make sure and provide that info.
So that's what I was looking for. Thank you for asking.
Yep.
Thank you, Kathy. I see Dale has a hand up.
I, I did. I think Johann had his hands up first.
Oh, I didn't see that. Go ahead, Johann. Thank you, Dale.
Okay, thank you. Travis, or rather, Mr. Parker, back in maybe 1899. I had this idea that we could have a Gantt chart somewhere that shows where different things plug in. After the application process. And I still, it still would be useful to have some overall idea of where. The Planning Commission plugs into the allotment process, since it's not part of the zoning ordinance. And, but also some idea of where the allotment applications start coming in, following. Something like an application for rezoning or an application for. I guess you have to have an allotment before you can apply for a building permit also. But I kind of would like to have an idea of where the succession might be. And where the Planning Commission specifically plugs in.
And Travis, I was gonna, I was gonna ask, I don't think it was in the packet, but slide six, which Bria had in her presentation. Was kind of a timeframe for the applicant. Is that something that you want to see? And we can require that and include it as part of the packet and presentation as well. We can draw it out differently if you need to see something like a Gantt chart or, you know, steps. The, the applicant or the developer will have all that information, and they can share it with us. Timing isn't necessarily something that's a, a, a topic that they wouldn't share. And it's something we can provide to the commission.
Yeah, actually, that timeline was very useful. Yeah, um, actually, that timeline was very useful and maybe that ought to be a routine part of it. It also answers to Mrs. Kettner's concern, uh, concerns that she raised, but I have the same concerns.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Johann. Um, Dale, I believe you're up.
Thank you. Um, I uh, to to your question, uh, Mr. Parker and and Mr. Rice, um, I found the timeline also to be very helpful. I think um, I I think what would also be helpful is that i- in these considerations, we are are expected maybe to know some things that most people don't know about the development and construction processes, uh, even delays that relate to uh, to weather. I mean, we obviously live in a four season area and so they can't do uh, a lot of uh, of uh, improvements, especially water sewer lines and roads, that kind of thing in the winter time, when the ground is frozen. Um, so that um, it would be helpful to know if when those kinds of things are are a part of the of the process. Uh, and also um, uh, with, and I say this without pointing any sort of fingers. I have heard that it takes a little while right now to get a building permit. I assume it's in part because uh, the planning department doesn't have as many staff as they have had in the past. Um, and it it seems to me that that's a, that should be a consideration for us as well if if someone's waiting um, many months to get a building permit or for a a review or or whatever it happens to be. And so just telling us that kind of information, I think is is helpful. It shouldn't be, that shouldn't be a burden to the to a developer because that would be completely out of their control, even a- a- as much as the weather. So those sort of out of out of their control, in particular, those sort of out of their control factors, I think would be really helpful for us to know about. Thank you.
Thanks. My question, uh, Travis kind of really dovetails perfectly on Dale's question. Um, I would feel better, I think, if we had um, in the event of an extension request, if we had a little more technical information about how how uh, you know, what is holding up the process. And I understand there's a lot of things that could do that. And I'm not sure the the best way to bring in technical information, if it would be somebody from um, our Public Works Department to speak to timelines or if the developer could bring um, a little more information about the state of the market in terms of uh, contracting. There's a lot of things that could be influencing it. And I think it would be helpful in uh, in my thought process to have a little bit more information that that clarifies um, the nature of the request. So and I think as as we go through these, uh, it'll help educate all of us a little bit about some of the intricacies of all of this work that goes into completing these projects. So that's my thought. However you think it would be best done, staff may be able to answer some questions on technical issues. Um, the developer like Mr. Montalbano could probably address maybe financing challenges or other things, but a little more information is what I would seek to. Thank you.
That's fair. And and I I think the the reasoning on the timing is probably gonna be different for each project. So yeah, it might be different people or different information that we bring to each time. But now that we know that the commission is interested on in, you know, what's causing a delay, if there is a delay and and what the timing of that project is, we can certainly bring any information relevant to that.
Well, speaking of the word cause, I'm glad you mentioned it because um, reading through the um, 1427, you mentioned, you know, for good cause would be the basis. Do we have um, a little deeper definition of what that means? Is that something we should seek? Maybe some input from Mr. Cox on so we have an understanding? Or is it a pretty much in a a subjective term?
We we can certainly bring Mr. Cox in. I don't know that he's gonna have a lot to add. Um, as far as we can tell, that's that's really up at your discretion, what that means.
Okay, thank you. Um, I see no more questions, so uh, does that wrap up general business? Any other items people want to raise? Okay, seeing no hands, then um, I adjourned this meeting of the Lakeview Planning Commission at 7:47 PM. And I'll take just a a second here to um, get ready and then I will convene the Board of Adjustments meeting.
Hello, Mr. Todd Hill.
Okay, so thank you for bearing with me. Um, so now we are transitioning. We are opening the Board of Adjustments meeting at uh, 7:48 PM. I call this meeting to order on August 19, 2020. Um, Secretary Schultz, will you call the roll?
Board Member Bartlet? You are you are needed. Here.
There we go.
Board Member Cone?
Here.
Board Member Heald?
Here.
Board Member Kentner?
Here.
Board Member Miller?
Here.
Board Member Peters?
Here.
Board Member Stone?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Secretary Schultz. Will you now um, please read into the record item number three? I could, you know, let me pause that a minute. Before we go to the item number three, I wanted to ask um, Bill Todd Hill if he would give us some information and informational update, if you will, on the mediation uh, meeting that took place um, between our last meeting and this meeting.
Uh, certainly, uh, Chairman Heald. Um, on the 14th of August, we held a mediation. It started uh, shortly after nine o'clock after a few technical difficulties. Um, it involved the homeowners associations who were involved in the litigation in what I call the Rule 106 Action. Uh, it involved counsel for the city and uh, Director Parker. Uh, it involved myself and it involved lawyers from the applicant uh, developer uh, in this matter. There were also a couple of representatives from the homeowners association who were participating in the meeting. Um, the meeting lasted until almost six o'clock uh, in the evening. Uh, we did take a lunch break um, and a couple of moderate breaks during the afternoon so the parties could couldn't uh, assault with themselves and talk about what was going on. Um, but the upshot is that um, after nearly nine hours of discussion, there was a proposal that seemed to be relatively acceptable to the developer. Probably acceptable to the homeowners and the neighbors. Um, and there's sort of a term sheet that is being, for lack of a better term, circulated at the moment. And uh, the bottom line from my perspective is that there was a tremendous amount of progress that was made in developing a proposal um, that would be generally acceptable to both the developer and the neighbors who have um, taken a strong interest in this project. There is a follow-up uh, meeting that is scheduled for uh, one o'clock on August uh, 24th to discuss with the mediator uh, where things currently stand. Um, I think that if the proposal moves forward, there will be some sort of a new proposal that is uh, submitted to the city for planning department review. I do not know whether or not any items in that particular proposal will come before the Planning Commission or the Board of Adjustment. Uh, you have all indicated that you do not wish to prejudge any of those specifics. Um, and so I'm not going to share any of those specifics with you. Um, because my uh, my read on your prior uh, conversations is that uh, you don't want to bias yourselves in any way. What I can tell you is that I think that there is a high degree of optimism that the discussions are very promising uh, and may well lead to a proposal that is generally acceptable to um, the community uh, who's currently involved and the developer. Uh, I will know more after the 24th of August. Um, but at the moment, I'm, you know, I I can tell you that our conversations during most of the day were open and candid and involved all of the parties. Uh, it did not involve people going off into separate rooms and having private conversations. So I was privy to what took place. Um, and I think that there is a pretty decent likelihood that there may be an outcome that can be presented to uh, the planning department that is generally acceptable. So that's my report from having spent last Friday at the mediation by Zoom.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Um, now at this point.
I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, there's one other item to that and that is the, where does that leave the litigation? And I think that the parties are inclined to leave the litigation open-ended until they figure out whether or not they have come up with some level of uh, alternative resolution, but no one is is looking to push the litigation. I think they just want to kind of leave it in place um, until they figure out whether or not there's a alternative outcome. Um, and so I I know from your perspective, uh, as the Board of Adjustment, as a defendant in that case, you're interested in knowing, you know, what happens next. And I think what happens next is um, the parties, for the most part, would like to just hold it in abeyance. Seeing what how happens in terms of their, you know, negotiations. But I I I'm thinking there's it's looking fairly good.
Okay, uh, thank you, Bill. Um, the next item on the uh, agenda is
Chairman Hill, I'm I'm sorry, I I had my hand up and so this, Mr. Miller, and I just wanted to take a minute to thank Mr. Todd Hill for going and attending that and representing us and then coming back with such a good report. I I think we're, all of us are probably very pleased and relieved that uh, things are going as well as they are. And I just wanted to thank you for doing that for us.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. Dale, I also see a hand up.
Thank you. I uh, I echo uh, what uh, Board Member Stone said. I was gonna say the same thing. Thank you. Sounds very promising. We can't ask for more than the developer and the neighbors and the city all were playing together nicely. That's a good thing. And that's, that should be, uh, that should be where it happens. It shouldn't be in our court since it happens. I'm glad to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dale. Um, in light of what our next agenda item is, Mr. Todd Hill, I'd like to ask you if, uh, would you entertain any questions from the board uh, at this point outside of of executive session?
I could certainly entertain questions. I don't feel a need at this particular juncture to have an executive session to buy legal advice. Um, I personally feel that we are pretty much where we have been uh, in the past. And I continue to encourage a wait and see attitude particularly in light of the, what seemed to be very promising conversations between the most interested parties in this matter. And uh, no one was suggesting in any of our mediation discussions that um, action by the board would be uh, something they would be looking forward to. Thinking that a uh, a wait and see attitude is the right way to go. I mean, I could have come back and said, you know, this discussion was a disaster. You know, these people are just banging their heads together and nothing good is gonna come out of this. Uh, but I will tell you that, you know, between nine o'clock in the morning and six o'clock at night, the different perspectives came together and led to some proposals. And again, I'm I'm not gonna share the particulars with you because you have uh, indicated you don't necessarily want to hear them, but I'm gonna tell you that they are they addressed all of the concerns that are in the lawsuit, which include height, which include density, which include involvement in the uh, the style and the approach to the project. And none of the parties walked away saying, we can't find a a solution. And so I I will it it tell you without the particulars, I will simply tell you that there was a strong indication that they could probably find common ground on all of those issues. And so I would not feel a need to have an executive session for legal advice um, because I will just give you my practical advice and my practical advice is things are moving in a positive direction. Let them move there.
Okay, uh, thank you very much um, for that thorough report. I see we have another question, Dale?
Um, thank you. Actually, I was not a question so much as a suggestion about us moving forward, but I don't want to uh, steal your thunder. Or is that where you were going?
Oh, me as far as moving forward?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I think we're we're at a a point where item three is a request for executive session. And we could simply um, follow through and um, have the clerk read item three and we ask um, for a motion in a second. If we don't get them, then it dies on the agenda. But there there may be another approach and I'm open to that, Dale. What's your thought?
I was just wondering if before we decide on that, we should um, discuss here about uh, the possibility of of uh, rescinding the motion uh, that that's on the table. Because as long as it's there, we have to continue to a specific date. And I don't think um, that we could, we'd have to, what could happen is that we go to that date and then we continue to the next date. And I think there's no reason that uh, the motion couldn't be made again if if that were the the desire of the the motion maker and and the second.
I, Mr. Miller, I'm gonna agree with that, that you can always bring up a new motion at another time as long as it's properly noticed up. Um, and so you don't necessarily need to continue it. You could. Um, but you could also, if the motion maker wanted to place that on a future agenda, that could happen as well, as long as it's properly noticed.
So Bill, questions with the, does both the motion maker and the second have to rescind the motion or is it just the motion maker?
Johann knows.
Oh. Both would have to uh, agree to withdraw the motion. And it also, someone could object. They're in theory, that seldom happens, but uh, that possibility is out there.
Okay, well then.
By unanimous consent. And you may want to go to the, uh, go past item four, or rather, item three to item four, also by unanimous consent, if you want to ask for that.
Okay, so um, at this Okay, so at this point, it seems appropriate to ask the motion maker if she's willing to rescind the motion?
I think there's a question on the table.
There's, Ms. Peters has a question, Dale has a hand up.
Yeah, a couple of us had some questions, I think. Do we anticipate a. Resolution coming out of the next meeting on the 24th, is that, did I understand that correctly?
I think there will be a. Fairly solid outcome. After the 24th, there were not a lot of issues left up in the air. After last Friday's discussion, it was just a question of. Memorializing them. And. I think if there are any significant issues. I will know by the 24th. And what I will do is I will. Assuming you're okay with it, I will send you guys an email. That says, okay, we've come to. The parties have come to a place that they think they can live with, or they haven't, but I'll give you an update.
Okay, thank you, and I remember in an earlier. Meeting, or you had mentioned that having this motion on the table helped. Added to uncertainty and that parties are more inclined to resolve a case if there is that uncertainty. So I guess my, my question for the board is. Maybe it's better to keep this motion on the table until a meeting passed the 24th for that purpose.
Ms. Peters, I will tell you that they know that that motion was on the table. And so it certainly. Probably played into various parties' thinking. I don't know if you need to keep it on the table, because I think you can always, someone can always bring it back. But that's up to you, I, it was not. It was an elephant in the room that people acknowledged.
Okay, thank you, I, I think my inclination is to keep it on the table. For one meeting, I don't know when we're scheduled to meet again, but I think that's where I'm leaning. Thank you, I'm, I'm complete.
Thank you, Rhonda. I'll raise my hand here and call myself. I, I'm inclined to agree that I don't feel like we should take action. You know, beyond continuing the motion until there's something to react to. I think it would be premature to, to pull the motion at this point, so I would support Rhonda's proposition there. Kathy, I see a hand up.
Mr. Chairman, if you, if you do that, I would urge you to continue. The matter to a date certain. Particular. In the future, you, you can't just leave it out there procedurally. I don't know when your next meeting is scheduled for, and again, it's, it's up to you as a board, what you, how you care to handle it. But if you do want to keep it on the table, I would again encourage you to continue it to a date certain.
Thank you, very important clarification. At this point, Ms. Kettner, I see you hand up.
Yes, Mr. Tuttill, you just stole my thunder, I was gonna suggest that we table this motion to a date certain of August 26th. Because we are already scheduled to meet, and it's after August 24th, which is the mediation date that we're waiting for. And to have it continue to. After, at the conclusion of the Planning Commission Study Session of August 26th. Unless it would be easier for Mr. Tuttill's schedule to do it before. And then he doesn't have to stay for our, you know, listen to the meeting first, I'm just.
The good news from your perspective is I will probably write off my time that I spend watching the Planning Commission meet. As opposed to watching the Board of Adjustment, which I'm providing legal counsel to. So I'm a fairly. Fair biller when it comes to my legal work, but I leave that up to you, I am available on the 26th.
I was more thinking about your time than your bill, and whether or not, you know, which time would work better for you, but I guess then I would propose.
If I could just jump in and interject, I think that's a good idea to do it beforehand, I think the meeting on 26th is a study session, isn't it, of the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Those tend to be less specific, and so maybe have the formal Board of Adjustment meeting and update first would be the better way to go.
Works for me.
Can we just have a quick show of hands on the screen, does that work for everybody to have it on the 26th, that's the starting meeting at 7:00 P.M.? Yeah, we have a, certainly have a unanimous, I believe. So, Mr. Rice, Mr. Schultz, can we make those adjustments for the schedule?
You can make, but I also think you should make a formal motion to continue. The agenda item. Until the 26th at 7:00, if that's what you're planning on doing.
Yeah, I started that and then got distracted with the time, I apologize, I would like to make a motion to. Table the, the motion to a date certain of August 26th at 7:00 P.M.
We have a second? I will second, we have Dale second, so I seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no hands, then. Shall we vote? To Mr. Schultz, will you do the roll call vote?
Board Member Bartlet?
Aye.
Board Member Combe?
Aye.
Board Member Heald?
Aye.
Board Member Kentner?
Aye.
Board Member Miller?
Aye.
Board Member Peters?
Aye.
Board Member Stone?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good. So. With regard. To the agenda, and Mr. Rice, I may need your, your guidance here. You know, we've discussed our options, we've taken action, essentially covered item four. We did not end up requesting an executive session, do we need to do anything for the record at this point with regard to those items?
No, it, so the agenda is. You know, it, it kind of outlines what we're gonna talk about at the meeting, and you've, you've acted on the items as they were listed on the agenda. So I, I think you, you satisfied your requirement, is, is that your question?
That's my question, yeah, I just didn't know procedurally if we needed to do anything.
No, nothing, nothing formal, nothing formal.
Thank you very much, then, so we are. At the agenda item number five, Mr. Schultz, will you read that into the record?
Approval of minutes of the December 4th, 2019 Board of Adjustment Regular Meeting.
Okay, I will open. This one to any discussion? Are there any hands, Rhonda, I see a hand raised, thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't on the board at that time, so I'm planning to abstain from this vote.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kettner, Kathy, I see a hand.
Likewise, the same thing that Ms. Peters said.
Okay, that would still leave us with. Five and a quorum right to vote, is that correct? So are there any other comments? Then would somebody please make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of December 4th, 2019.
And I'll second.
May I ask a question, then also, is it necessary to have a quorum to approve the minutes, since we can do it by acclamation?
Good question.
I think it is.
Okay. Okay, just curious.
Thank you for the, for the question, Dale, we've certainly done this different ways at different times, I appreciate the clarification. I'm one that tends to like formality for the record, I think it sometimes clarifies things.
I just, it hasn't come up for me ever. So.
Okay. So, did we vote on that yet, I'm sorry, I'm thinking ahead here. Do we need to call for a vote? Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Yes, a vote would need to be called.
Okay, please, I see no more hands up for discussion, so a closed discussion. We have a motion to approve, I believe, and second, so please take the roll call vote, sir.
And I will still read all of the names of the board members, Simon, if you could please state if you're abstaining. Board Member Bartlet?
Aye.
Board Member Combe?
Aye.
Board Member Heald?
Aye.
Board Member Kentner?
Abstain.
Board Member Miller?
Aye.
Board Member Peters?
Abstain.
Board Member Stone?
Aye.
The motion passes 5 to 0 with two indentions.
Thank you, Secretary Schultz. Will you now read? Item six into the minutes? Into the record.
Item six, approval of minutes of the January 15th, 2020 Board of Adjustment Regular Meeting.
Thank you. I'd like to. To open discussion on this item with a motion. In light of our discussions at the last meeting with, with respect to. Minutes and publication of minutes and records retention and those sorts of things. I move for the approval of the written minutes of the December, of the January 15th, 2020 Board of Adjustment. Meeting with the condition that all audio and video records from the Board of Adjustment meetings on the January 15th. Be permanently retained by the city clerk. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Alan Heald and a second by Johann Combe, is there any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Stone, Board Member Stone?
What is the purpose of retaining them beyond the typical retention schedule?
The purpose would be to ensure a complete record. And this is in alignment with city councils' policy and procedures now. In 2018, they, they passed that change, so the electronic records are permanently retained. And I'm making this motion in light of these particular minutes because of the fact that these meetings are the subject of litigation. And it concerns me if records would be destroyed, that would somehow be necessary down the road in a litigation situation. So I just think it protects the city a little bit better if we retain the electronic. You know, the voice recordings of, of the, the meeting, so that's, that's why I made the motion tonight.
Thank, thank you for clarifying that, I'm, I'm wondering from city staff, what is the typical retention schedule? How would we be deviating from what the city does in other areas?
Right, I'm not sure the exact time, Paul, but there is a, it is a statement, and maybe Mr. Tuttill can weigh in. I don't know that we have the power to alter the, the normal retention schedule. However, to your concern, Mr. Chairman, when there is legal action. Courts do put stays on the, on retention of material, or require us to retain materials beyond the normal attention set, schedule. And we already have that in this case for anything to do with this item.
Thank you. Let's see who was next here.
Mr. Park?
Oh, yes, Ms. Tuttill.
I don't know what Lakewood's normal retention schedule is, but Mr. Parker is correct. That during the period of litigation, you are not entitled to, and in fact, there are strict rules against. Destroying evidence or records. Even if it's part of your normal retention schedule. So I would assume that there is, you know, there should not be any. Disposition of the records while any litigation is ongoing. I do not, I cannot speak to what Lakewood's normal practice is.
In that, in, Mr. Tuttill, so Lakewood's practice is two years plus current, so that would be 2018, 2019, and the current calendar year of 2020.
Thank you.
Okay, can I clarify, Paul, two years plus from the current, would that include both paper records and electronic audio recordings?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's good, because I, I was under the impression that audio recordings were not retained for that length of time, so that's a very important clarification, thank you. Rhonda, I see a hand up.
Yeah, I generally support retaining information, especially given the, the litigation. Obviously, I, I'll abstain again, but because I can't approve minutes that I wasn't, you know, in attendance of the meeting. But, but I do, I do support this retention, my question for you is. Are you suggesting indefinite retention just for these minutes? Or is this something that you're suggesting ongoing for minutes in the future?
Tonight, I'm just suggesting retention of these minutes. Based on the requests that I received prior to the last meeting, I think this is something we should take up in our policy and procedures. Rules and regulations study session as to whether or not we want to look at our policy and. You know, be a little more detailed in our policy, but tonight, my motion is just with respect to these specific minutes.
Okay, well, I would certainly support retention, but since you've kind of put the two together. I mean, obviously, if everybody else approves, it's, it's not a problem, but, but I'll be abstaining from approving the minutes.
Okay. So Johann, I believe you are next.
Yeah, I, I really favor keeping the spoken record, the recorded record. For actually an indefinite period, or at least as long as we're in litigation, I'm particularly concerned on page 14. My question to Mr. Silvestro, and then again, my question of Mrs. White on page 17. Actually, my actual questions were couched a little bit differently, and I didn't want to get. Into a long discussion or start listening to the record itself at this point. This is apparently what the trans, what the summarizer heard or concluded. But I really. My exact words were not as are stated here, and I don't want to change anything at this point. In fact, I think the summarizer really did a yeoman's job, working these minutes over, this couldn't have been an easy task. And having. Reference those two areas where I think my exact words might be more instructive. Let me flip quickly. Same thing applies on page 20. On my comment there, and there was another place I was going to ask if anyone had a different recollection. I noticed, and this doesn't refer to my comments particularly, but on page 24. Board Member Miller asked Mr. Park. Board Member Miller asked Mr. Krasnow to swear in, kind of leaves me dangling and trying to recall what actually happened. Maybe Mr. Miller can explain that more fully. And then Mr. Krasner swore in. Lee, and then it continues with Mr. Parker's, um, long statement summarized. Do you have any recollection on that, uh, Mr. Miller?
I do. He, he was not one of the people who had originally been sworn in for testimony.
Oh, you were catching up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. But that was, it is accurate the way that it's, when it's recorded in minutes.
Yeah, I don't want to be caught in the trap of somebody playing the tape and saying, that's exactly what was, was said, if that's exactly what was said. My comment on third, page thirty might have to be revisited, and I have to apologize. I, this is something I wanted to bring to the secretary's attention earlier, and that was where it says the landowners have rights and believe, believe this is a private controversy. And I had some question of who is it that believes this was a private controversy? Because I did certainly, and we may want to do a slight revision there. Landowners have rights, and he believes this is a private controversy. Might be a better expression there. But I did want to present it. I, I didn't want to, if I stumbled and said something kind of awkward, that's what happened. I wonder if Mr. Schultz wants to weigh in on that.
Well, Mr. Schultz has his hand up. I, I think we need to see what he has to say.
Thank you, and unfortunately, I can't speak to these minutes as I was not the secretary to the Board of Adjustment at that time. However, in a meeting for the approval of the minutes, if there are any inconsistencies, this would be an opportunity to rectify those because the minutes, um, once approved would become the official documentation of the meeting, and the minutes are an intent to summarize the intent of the speakers, and it's not necessarily to create a verbatim transcription. However, if the speaker believes that their intent was not accurately represented, this would be an opportunity as well to provide those corrections, so that the changes can be made to the minutes. They're not presented to you as a complete document. They are completely, uh, presented as a draft document that until they are approved can be revised by the board.
Think we can actually.
Well, in that case, I will correct that one sentence and would suggest that instead of the landowners have rights and believe this is a private controversy. Okay, I, I've, I'm, uh, waffling at this point because I'm trying to recall what actually happened and what I was trying to express.
So if I could, maybe I could help, but I, I believe that according to Robert's rules, we can make in it, uh, a correction to the minutes even after we've approved them.
Well, that can be done by motion, that's true. But, you know, I am going to propose that sentence be altered to say the landowners have rights, and he believes, that's two changes. He is inserted after and, and believes is, instead of believe, it will become believes, this is a private controversy. That makes more sense anyway. And if there's no objection, I'll offer that as an amendment. And that's the only other thing that I would, I think needs to be changed in the minutes.
Okay, thank you, Johann. Kathy, I see your hands up.
Thank you. I thought Mr. Rice, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood. But at least in city council policy and procedures, it does, I looked it up, and it does say all audio and video recordings will be permanently retained by the city clerk. So I'm sorry if that's what you said, and I misunderstood that. So I just wanted to let the commission know that.
So I, I would need to clarify that. My understanding, so, so the clerk's office is kind of the ultimate repository for materials. If they've made an update to, their archiving of materials, I may not be aware of that, and I need to clarify, because we follow the clerk's office policy. My understanding is it was, you keep two plus.
It, it's policy five point one two.
Okay.
City Council Policy and Procedure.
I will verify that.
So if I can jump in here for a second, Paul, I appreciate what you just said, that we, we follow the procedures like this that are in place, put in place for city council. Is there anything we would need to do formally to have that in our, in our rules and regulations, or is it just had been a matter of policy over time that we've all followed that?
So the, the archiving of materials for the planning commission, follow that structure. In fact, if you put it in your policies and procedures and then council changed it, and you didn't change it, you, you have a conflict. So I would not necessarily recommend doing that. Let me confirm that that's, that's the, we follow council recording process, and if that's the case, I wouldn't recommend that we actually put that in the, the bylaws when we do that, uh, the, the policies and procedures update.
Okay, thank you. Johann.
Mr. Chair, can I just have one more quick item on page thirty-one? I think this is a typo. Board member Bartlett in the, somewhere close to the middle of the page, and R needs to be inserted for member. I think there's an incomplete word there.
Board member Cone, I just noticed that as well.
Okay, are you complete, Johann?
That's got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate, Paul, that you're gonna check in on the, the city process for city council. I think I've been told the city clerk says six months after approval of minutes as far as retention of audio, so any clarity that you can bring to this will help guide us so that we're doing the best that we can do there. Thank you. I have a typographical correction while I'm on the floor here. Page twenty-nine, last paragraph, just a typo in the second sentence where it says indicated to the, applicated, it should be indicated to the applicant, just a minor typo. Thank you. That's my only correction. Johann, I see your hand up again. Not anymore.
Got to remember to do.
No worries. Too many buttons to remember. At this point, I don't see any additional hands up. So are we ready to, to take a vote on the motion as amended to approve? Yes.
Chairman Heald, I would recommend that the motion be to approve the minutes with the corrections suggested by Board Member Cone and Chairman Heald, so that we know what you're voting on. Mr. Schultz, I see you raising your hand. Are you?
The language that I have used with previous bodies is move to approve the minutes as amended. If everyone is in agreement of the amendment to have been made.
So, Mr. Schultz, just a, a point of order, we don't need to vote on the amendments. We just vote on approving the amendments as, or the, excuse me, the minutes as amended.
That is correct.
So are we ready to call for a vote? I believe we are.
I wonder if your original motion, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, your original motion included a requirement for, for keeping these records indefinitely. And since Mr. Tuddhill said that that has to happen until as long as there's litigation, is that something you want to keep in this one motion to approve this one set of minutes?
I'd like to have it in, in the motion, just to be clear about this down the road. So I'd like to leave it in. Thank you.
Sure, just wanted to remind it if it was there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, I believe, Mr. Schultz, can you take a roll call vote, please?
One moment, please. Commissioner Bartlett?
Aye.
Or Board Member?
Aye.
Board Member Cone?
Aye.
Board Member Heald?
Hi, but I need to interrupt and ask Bill if I should have clarified the motion as amended before calling for the vote.
I don't think so. I, I understand that the motion is to approve the minutes with amendments from Mr. Cone and Mr. Heald, and to retain the oral records permanently. That's what I understand the motion to be.
All right, thank you for the clarity. I vote aye.
Board Member Kentner?
Abstain.
Board Member Miller?
Aye.
Board Member Peters?
Abstain.
Board Member Stone?
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero with two abrogations.
Okay, thank you, sir. Will you read the next agenda item into the meeting, item seven, please?
Item seven, approval of minutes of the January twenty-second, 2020 Board of Adjustment Regular Meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Dale, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty-second, two, two thousand twenty.
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner or Board Member Bartlett. Thank you, Alex. So is, is there any discussion? Please raise your hand electronically. I would like to, actually, I need to back up if I can. I'd like to include the same language in this one that I included for the fifteenth, because they're essentially what I would consider two critical meetings, and the amendment that I requested or proposed with regard to audio and video retention, I'd like to apply to this. Would you like to do that?
I, I would be willing to modify my motion to include that language.
Okay, thank you, Dale.
I guess we'd, we'd, it would depend on Board Member Bartlett's second in agreement.
I agree. I'll second that.
You second that. So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as amended. Any other further comments? Rhonda?
Yeah, I just had a question. How come these minutes are being approved so many months after the fact? Just curious about that.
The, the board has not had meetings between January and July, and I believe the July meeting was, was my first meeting with the board, and I didn't necessarily have those prepared and routed properly for this meeting. So a lot of that was due to the timing of, of the meetings. Meetings are not scheduled solely for the purpose of approving minutes, but also to allow me time to onboard and to respond to our first online meeting.
Very good. Thank, thank you. Appreciate that.
Alex, I see your hand up.
Um, it actually, but I thought about that when we were approving the, the last meeting minutes, and I'm glad that Board Member Peters asked. I, I guess my question was surrounding Board Member Sinks, who's no longer a member of the board, and we're approving minutes for someone who is no longer with us on this board. So that, that kind of clears it up. I just had a question, and I think when Board Member Peters asked it, I just remembered about Board Member Sinks, but it appears it's not an issue. Understand that the, the meetings are not verbatim, and we do have audio record of these meetings, so I don't have the concern about that. Um, I think one other point I'd like to ask maybe the group, and I should have done this before I seconded the motion, but I typically do not review these meetings for acronyms, and I will note that the secretary does a good job in calling out acronyms. However, I did note HOA is homeowner associations on page six does not define in these meeting notes. Um, and I'm wondering from the rest of the board members if that's the kind of detail that I, we should be taking, or are we reviewing this mostly for, you know, what we spoke about in these meetings and our intent?
I will, Dale's got a hand up. Thank you, Dale.
Sure, I'll, I'll jump in and say that I, I think this was mentioned earlier, that me, minutes are, are intended to be a summary and, and not verbatim, and things, I, I don't know that I would worry so much about acronyms. I mean, in, in formal writing, you would certainly want to be doing that. In a, in context kind of situation like this, I don't think it'd make as much difference. I think people reading the minutes would probably understand those acronyms. Or they could go to the tape, I suppose, if, if they need to.
That's a good question. Yeah, I think it demonstrates how useful the tape can be if people have questions. Teresa, I see your hand up.
So to answer your question, Board Member Bartlett, I've not been reading these for grammar or typos or anything like that. I've been, you know, checking to see how well what I said, the content of what I said was represented. That seemed fine with all these minutes, and then, you know, reading through to see if the discussion went as I remembered it. That's all I'm doing now. If, if we need to do a little more than that, just, y'all just let me know.
No, I don't think so. I just wanted to make sure I was on the same page with your level of review, and that's what I've been doing too.
Okay, thank you. It looks like we're complete. So at this point, I'll ask Mr. Schultz to take a roll call vote to approve the minutes.
Board Member Bartlett?
Aye.
Board Member Cone?
Aye.
Board Member Heald?
Aye.
Board Member Kentner?
Aye.
Board Member Miller?
Aye.
Board Member Peters?
Abstain.
Board Member Stone?
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero with two abrogations.
Thank you, Secretary Schultz. Will you now please read item eight into the record?
Item eight, general business?
Thank you. Do we have any hands up to discuss or bring up general business? I have one that I will bring up, seeing no additional hands. Some time ago, we had, I, I sent an email, I think, to Aaron about updating the Board of Adjustment's email addresses for the current board, and I'd like to find out if we've made any progress on that, and I think this also kind of touches on the question that Travis, you and I had some discussion about. Dale made a great suggestion about setting up a planning Dale made a great suggestion about setting up a planning commissioner general mailbox. So first question is, are we close to getting the the correct addresses for the board? Second question, please update me on group email.
The a roster for the Board of Adjustment has been created, and I apologize if I have not sent that out. I thought that I sent that out with the meeting in July, but I will, if if I have not, I'll send it out again.
Okay, I may have missed it, yeah, so thank you.
Well, that I did not send it out and may have been waiting for review. But either way, I'll send it up to the board. It includes contact information, updated contact information. And please let me know if there are any changes that need to be made that could also be made to the planning commission roster.
Okay, great, thank you for the update. Any other hands? Alex? Oh, is somebody else, I saw Alex.
Mr. Schultz, if you weren't finished, you can go ahead.
Board Member Hill, I did want to respond to your second question regarding group email.
Thank you, Alex.
And that is that a email address has been created that would send all emails to the entirety of the commission as well as Mr. Rice and myself. And I would need to verify it because I don't have it up. But any response, staff is discussed and Mr. Rice can correct me if I'm wrong. Would, we would prefer that it would be replied with reply all. So that again, all of the commissioners and board members are aware of any response. But that an email has been created that again would would send an email to all of the the Lakewood email addresses for the members of the commission.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Alex, for keeping us on track. Did you have additional information, Mr. Schultz, are you complete?
I'm complete, thank you.
Very good, Alex, did you have additional questions or comments?
On a separate topic, it's a question for staff on a matter of process regarding the public records we request from last week. My understanding is that the city's IT staff is able to pull our emails. And I was unclear in the initial email from city on the direction. I think it said that if we had emails, maybe they're speaking to personal email accounts that we should forward that to them. I just want to make sure I'm clear on process and that this particular public records request was resolved. And if there's anything else needed from members of the board to satisfy that member of the public's request.
Right, Commissioner Bartlett, I'm not privy to that specific public records request. And so kind of answering your question, that's one of the reasons why we have. So would IT be able to access the, if it was a public records request, a a personal email? They would, that are in the actual Lakewood system. So something that's come in and they can they can link back to it. Would they be able to access your personal email account? I'm not, I I don't think I could answer that question from a legal standpoint. But the answer would not necessarily be no, it's it's city business. And that's why we we got to the point where we wanted all communication with staff to go through your Lakewood account. And so, yes, that is subject to to public records review. Getting out that purview, it's it's beyond me. And I don't even know if Mr. Tuthill wants to take a stab at that. But personal, personal email for kind of a public use, there's there's got to be something subject to that. But they they have to figure that out. So, yes, IT would have fulfilled that request. And then that's why we use the Lakewood.org email addresses that you have.
Very good, thanks.
Mr. Rice, I I'm willing to weigh in on this topic. I can't speak to what Lakewood IT can access. But I can tell all of you that even if you use your personal emails, your personal text messages, your personal cell phones to discuss public business, it is deemed a public record that is subject to the Open Records Act. So the process of accessing it is difficult and awkward. But it does not preclude it from being a public record. Even if you use your personal cellphone or your personal email account to discuss public business. So the fact that you occasionally may get a request that says, you know, tell us about your AOL account or your Gmail account or your text messages, and you say to yourself, it was on my personal cellphone, it does not keep it from being a public record. So.
Thank you.
Giving you all a forewarning that the reason that Mr. Rice or Mr. Cox or Mr. Schultz or somebody else may ask for your cellphone records is because it's deemed a public record if you discuss public business.
Thank you, Bill. Alex, does still see a hand up, you had a following question?
Nope, just forgot to lower it, thank you.
No worries. No worries, any other hands? Or anybody want to bring up anything else under general business?
I'm just, I would just chime in and in public records requests that I've been a part of before. Mr. Tithill's perception is that his take on this is what has been the case, it doesn't matter if it's personal whether we're planning commissioners or running for president.
Is that a clue to your future?
I was thinking, I was thinking it four years ago, but okay. Thanks for the thought, I hadn't thought of it until now.
Do we have any additional general business? Seeing no hands and no waves, then I will close general business. And at eight fifty PM on August nineteenth, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you all, have a good one.